Okay. Welcome, welcome to our October meeting. It's seven o'clock now.
Yes, it is.
Seven o'clock now, so welcome to our meeting. Luckily, our clock is only got two or three minutes wrong. But my phone, I go by that, so it's seven. But at this time, again, thanks for joining us. Would you stand and join in pledging allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, need to get the agenda. Counsel, have you received it? Well, I thought this was turned on.
That's YouTube, we'll pull that one closer.
Can you hear this? Okay, I'll try to be louder. At this time, we need to approve our agenda for tonight. Counsel has received a copy of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll move on through the agenda now. At this time, we don't have anybody that plan to speak to us now, but we have two people that will speak at another part of the meeting. So we'll move on now to announcements from our city manager.
October 11th, this Saturday, we have our annual Ball Ground Creek cleanup. If we have enough volunteers, we'll take adults only and move them down on Ball Ground Highway from Howell Bridge to Shark Mountain Creek for cleanup along that area. October 18th will be our Roots and Remembrance downtown, and the Chili Cook-Off goes with that as 12 to 1. October 24th will be Spooktacular, and October 25th will be Halloween in the Garden. So we have a pretty full October.
And these are all on our?
On the app, yes.
On the app, right, okay. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to just approve our minutes from the last two meetings we had. The first one was a special call meeting we had on September 4th. It was about buying a house and property here on Valley Street. And the second one was the monthly meeting, September 11th, regular meeting. So counsel has received copies of the minutes. Any changes? Could I get approval for each one of them?
I'll make a motion, we approve the September 4th special call meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Also now, we'll go to the September 11th meeting minutes. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 11th.
Vicki, second?
Second.
Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I might add, Kaylin does a great job on our minutes. We actually get them just a few days after the meetings, and thank you, what a good job you do. At this time, we don't have any old business to deal with, and so we'll move to new business. At this time, the first thing is consider the first reading of alcohol license application. It's Gary Lamb Revival South LLC. You want to update that, Eric?
There was some good dialogue at the work session. This is ready to go forward. If it is met with approval on the first reading, then we would include the conditions on the second reading, which at this time are observation of our noise ordinance, the requirement of 50% food sales, as well as requirement for food sales, it would be a food truck-based food sale. So for requirement for the food sale to be conducted at all times, the building is open.
But this is just for the alcohol license, though, right? The first reading for that, the second one will be in the conditions? Or is this on?
Yes, we would include the conditions in the second reading and have it in a formal document. If it moves forward, not this one.
Okay, well, we discussed this at our work session. Let me go ahead and ask for a motion to approve first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Vicki, second?
Second.
Christine, any comments? Or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that will be brought back up at our next meeting, and we'll be adding some things to that, correct? Okay, the second item under new business is consider first reading of an ordinance for private parking lots. Eric, you want to share the information?
Again, we had a briefing from Palmer at the work session. I think all the questions and whatnot were answered at that time. So if there's no further questions, we're... This just sets the standard on private parking lots and also makes the distinction that a private parking lot is a standalone business as a parking lot. This isn't a parking lot that accompanies a business, whether it's a restaurant, or hotel, or whatever that business might be. This is, a business is a parking lot.
Okay, well, again, this was discussed at our work session, so could I get a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance?
Motion to approve the first reading for the ordinance of the private parking lot?
Christine?
Second.
Second, Dennis? Again, at this time, any questions or comments? All right, let's vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll have the second reading in November. Then we'll move to the next item, consider the first reading of a public parking lot ordinance. This is different, but you want to give us an update on that?
The same, Palmer briefed everyone on the creation of this new ordinance. Provides the standards for the public parking lots, and it's ready to move forward.
In this ordinance, it's conditional, correct?
Well, not on the public parking lots. Public parking lots, wherever we put them, but the zoning code has already been changed. Their private parking lot would be a conditional.
Conditional or special?
Special.
A special use.
Okay, then, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Any further discussions, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm glad we don't have an opposition. Just my opinion. At this time, we'll move to the, the next item is consider a resolution to support outdoor trail grant. This is a, we're going to, because our income level has, for the city, has gone up, to get grants from the state, we have to put more into it. And so we're going to be applying for a $50,000 grant, and we'll put $20,000 in addition to it. So any other things you want to cover on that?
No, that's it. This grant requires a resolution of support from mayor and council, as well as obligating the funds. Obviously, if we don't get the grant, we have no obligation to expend the funds. This area is where we show on this slide here, the upper part of the slide where it shows this, it didn't turn on, hang on just a moment. Well, it's being stubborn tonight. But at the very top of the screen, where the red line begins, that is where the current trail of Roberts Lake ends. That is the ruins, the old damn site. So the proposal for the extension is to continue it on through our property, paralleling Long Swamp Creek until it deadends into the preserve at Long Swamp Creek neighborhood. The little spur going off to the right and ending at the creek, there's a little beach there. So there'd be a little trail spur that goes down to the beach area on Long Swamp.
Okay, unless Dennis wants to read it, the whole thing. I don't like reading the whole resolution, but I like reading the end of it that explains what we're doing. So it's therefore be it resolved that the city of Ball Ground is fully supportive of planning and executing the above project and allocating $20,000 toward its successful completion. And that, again, resolution has to be technically put out by me, but we get the council to sign it as well. So I want the council to approve it. You would, it's a resolution. Can I get a?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you all have to sign this, too. We'll let you do that at the end of the meeting. Okay, we'll move to the next new business item. Consider IGA for Cherokee County to conduct elections for the city of Ball Ground. If you turn the clock back many years ago, we had to do our own elections and had to pay for them. And right now, we work with the county, and we get a lot more value for very little money. So you want to explain that, Eric?
That is, this is just an agreement with Cherokee County so that trained staff that has a lot more experience in elections actually conducts the elections. We have access then to use the voting machines. They handle all of it at no cost to the city, as long as there is a county, state, or federal election that they are already conducting, which for us has always lined up. If we needed to have a special election, then there is a fee that we would need to pay based on how many employees they'd have to have at the polling place and items of that nature.
Okay, for this IGA, could I get a motion to approve? From the councils?
Motion to approve for the IGA for Cherokee County to conduct elections for the city of Ball Ground?
Second?
Sounds second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. I heard everybody answer. All right, thank you. Okay, so at this time, that is, that completes the new business items. And we'll move on now to, or police chief, chief?
Good evening.
I always say Chief Jamie, I'm sorry.
That's perfect.
That's outstanding.
Good evening, I think Eric's going to load mine up, but really quick, I'll just give some quick numbers. Our accidents are out this month. People seem to be wanting to follow people a little too close. And unfortunately, 575, which is an area we tend to patrol quite often, is our number one roadway for accidents. So I don't mind us being out there at all. Our top speed for the month is 96 miles an hour. So we're getting better, we're under 100. But if y'all would please get it in the 80s, I'd be a little bit happier. If we did 70, I'd be happy. But 96, it's better than 100, so I'll take that. But we got to quit following people too close. Out of our accidents that we have, 70% of the accidents caused are by people following too close. And those deer that jump out, they've caused quite a amount of damage and caused two other accidents. So we had 12 accidents this month, which is one every other, almost one every other day. So that's a lot, that's a lot. I think this is only because of the warm weather. We've had quite a number of DUIs. We had four DUIs this month, which is a lot, especially for this city. And again, I attribute that not to the businesses here, but we're sandwiched between Riverstone and all the establishments there, and Jasper and Pickens and all the establishments there. And again, I know you guys make a Cherokee Connect post about being on the interstate, but keep the drones off the interstate, the speeders off the interstate, we'll stay off the interstate. So until that happens, we're going to be out there. But that does not mean we're not in the city patrolling. Having said that, it doesn't look like my PowerPoint's going to load up, but there are a lot of other calls that we respond to that are not police-related. Meaning that fire calls, medical emergencies, things like that, that our guys, and girls, or guys, respond to on a moment's notice. Just three days ago, four days ago, we responded to the elementary school to a kindergartner having an active seizure. We were there in 68 seconds. We beat the fire department. So for all those that want to make a reference, Rusty Peter on the interstate, there was a guy at that school tending to that child who was having an active seizure in 68 seconds. So I'll take all the complaints you want about the interstate, because we're still getting it done in your city without anybody knowing. Same situation, we responded to a gentleman at the apartment complex who had a seventh stroke. Beat the fire department there. Now, we have a great fire department, but by the time it takes those big trucks to get going, these cars can whip in and out, and we get places where we need to really quick. So our guys are responding to calls that do not involve law enforcement work, and they're doing it day in and day out. So please understand when they're zipping around the city, they're going to things that you don't know about. We're going to falls, we're going to heart attacks, we're going to people that can't get out of the bed because they've got different ailments. So again, we're not doing your traditional police work in terms of enforcing, like traffic laws all the time, or we're not doing, answering to domestics, because that's one nice thing about living in this city is we have low crime rate. So we're going to take advantage of that, and we're going to do some other things. We're going to be in your neighborhoods a little bit more. I know, I love when you guys come up to me and say, hey, I saw your guys in my neighborhood, and I really appreciate that. I want to hear that. If we're not in there enough, you let me know, we've got emails, and I'm not a hard man to get a hold of. You let me know if we're not in your neighborhood enough, and I promise you, you'll see a car more than you want to. Number one thing, Mr. Mayor, we have a state-certified police agency, sir. Thank you.
Very proud.
I would love to take credit for it, I simply would, but I cannot. The gentleman that deserves all the credit, y'all are going to meet him in November. For those of you that don't, Stuart Gonzalez has been my accreditation manager, state accreditation manager. For those who don't know, English is a second language for Stuart. He was not, Spanish is his first language. So not only did Stuart learn accreditation, he did it basically with a second language. Accreditation, as Councilman Nelson can tell you, is a very tedious process. There's a lot of terminology, and it's not very easy to do. It deals with a lot of terms and a lot of phrases that you and I don't deal with on a daily basis. Stuart did very, very well with it. We were unanimously recommended. We had glowing remarks. We've done a really good job, and I'm very proud to bring that to the city. I'll let Ms. Rollmarth talk about the benefits of that to the entire city, not just to the police department. But the men here that are in the agency, they deserve all the credit. They could have just said, you know what, chief, we're not going to do that. We don't believe in it, we don't want to do it, but they actually signed up for it, they got on board with it. And we are going to be better for it, you're going to see a better agency, you're going to see a better trained police officer that's going to be able to serve you in their role. Damn road patrols, I talked about that, we talked about event calls. Follow-up on the events, we had our event last weekend, it was great. Mr. Lamb paid for security, so any resident that thought that the PD was down there on the city dime, it was not. It worked out really good, because I had two cars that were answering calls, doing everything. And then Mr. Lamb had somebody there that made the merchants feel safe, it made the vendors feel safe, and it was a good vibe, we had no problems. Parking was not an issue. It was a good crowd all day. People got to watch football, they got to shop, they got to do everything. And I came up, hung out, and again, no complaints. The guy said it worked really well. We got Spooktacular, it's one of the things that we love to participate in, we get to see the kids dressed up. We're having characters tomorrow at the elementary school, that's one of my favorite days. We're really interacting with the kids a lot more, and that's really exciting. New officer, I'm going to be hitting city manager up. I know we're budgeted for it, but I think we're getting close to being able to bring that person aboard at the right time. We're getting busier, so I would think in the next probably 30 to 60 days, I think we'll be right on time for that new person to come on. And we're cranking some things out. We are prepping for our Christmas parade. And I cannot wait till next month, when the Georgia chief's representative will present you with our state certification plaque. And now, now the work is on, because we have to maintain that certification. I'm not going to say it's easier to get it, but it's a lot harder to retain it, because now we're held to a standard. And I love it, because we rise up to the challenge, and we're going to get it, and looking forward to it. But thank you for all your support, and we appreciate everything that council gives us.
Well, we appreciate everything you've done since you joined us as chief.
Thank you.
Our police department is so good now, and I'm so proud of it personally. Any questions?
I do, I do have a question. You know Vicki, Vicki, we have questions. Since it's so hard for small towns to be state-accredited with a police department, are you guys going to be able to wear something and wear proudly? Because I'm very proud of that for you guys.
Well, the first thing you're going to see, we're going to get with our webmaster. When you go to our webpage, it will say state-certified law enforcement agency. I think that's huge. I'm looking at getting pins for our uniforms. We have the ability, if you want to place it on our cars, there's a seal that we could place on the car. So there's a lot of different things that we can do to it. But the number one thing, we're going to put on our stationery, that's huge. When you tell somebody you work for a state-certified law enforcement agency, that attracts talent to your agency. It lets your citizens know that your police department has taken an oath, and they have met these requirements, and they're top-notch. They're that percentage that has met the requirements that the state has put out. And they're tough, they really are. We're going to let this marinate for a little bit, we're going to enjoy it. But don't be surprised if we come back to you in about six months, and we're going to go after another certification. We're not stopping, we're still hungry.
Do they, does, do you have any idea what small cities, like populations of 3,500, or, you know, around 3,500, who are state-certified in the state of Georgia?
You know, again, smaller ones, I'm not, you know, again, Woodstock is, and they're much larger. Canton, sure, smaller ones, you know, I really, Dennis, you know, I mean, it's...
It's changed a lot since I was in it from the beginning. I imagine probably the majority of agencies are going to be smaller agencies than larger. The larger just get it just to have it.
Right. A lot of your tourists, like Helen, the Helen PD's going to have it, because a lot of tourists, and again, well, Mr. Rollmarth could talk about it, it helps with your insurance, your overall city reduction and your insurance loss. So a lot will do it for that reason. We did it for the opposite reason, that was just a bonus for us. We wanted that to let everyone know that we were up to a certain standard. Sheriff had it, the cities have it, by God, we're going to get it. So that was one of the reasons that fueled us to go get it.
Awesome.
Also, just...
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow, tomorrow, beginning at 4:30, we will hold the candlelight vigil for domestic violence awareness here in Cherokee County. It's been, it began in 1988. This is the first year the city of Ball Ground has hosted it. It's been primarily held at the Kent City Square. The leaders of the violence center reached out to me and asked, not only if they could hold it in Ball Ground, but they asked me if I would be the EFC. I don't get nervous very often, and I am, tomorrow, I am very nervous. Because it's such a, it's a prestigious event, and I don't want to screw it up, to be honest with you. And I'm looking forward to it, nervously looking forward to it. If you've never been to one, it's very, very emotional. You're going to hear some stories tomorrow, some survivors, some pretty terrible, terrible events in their lives that they survived. And I encourage you to come out, it'll be in City Park, beginning at 4:30, and then the vigil will start at 6:00. It's very moving. It would, it would be nice, it'd be a good learning moment for your families and your children to come out. It's very humbling. So if you're around tomorrow, and you want to see some real people that have battled through some things, stop online, I promise you, you'll walk away with a tissue. I promise you that. So that's tomorrow. I'm happy to say, with our partnerships, we have obtained a drone. I've worked an agreement out with Cherokee County EMA. You're thinking, why do we need a drone? Well, it's 2025, drones are being used in just about everything right now. It allows us to see things that we can't see from the air. It allows us to better make safety plans for concerts, for water leaks, for traffic situations. It helps us plan, it gives us a better view to help us tactically do some things. And number one thing, it costs the city $0. So I've worked it out with EMA to where if there's an emergency up here, a natural disaster, something with the weather, that our drone pilot, which we now have, our drone pilot will put the drone up and will capture all the data for EMA. And in return, EMA has given us, and they have signed the drone over to the city, so it is city property. And in return, for us doing work for them, if needed, they have given us about a $35,000 to $4,000 drone. So I thought it was a pretty good trade-off, and one that I graciously took. So again, we're just using our connections, and anything we can do to make our agency better, we're definitely going to do so.
Would you be looking at in the future drones as first responder?
Hundred percent. The sheriff has invested heavily in drones right now, to the tune of $100,000. They've got two drones in the county right now that are going to, they're going to be set up in two different precincts. As soon as a call comes out, these drones cost over $100,000 each, the drone goes to the call first. As soon as a call comes out, each drone shoots out to the call and gets eyes on the call before the officer even gets there. So an officer pulls up in their laptop what the drone is seeing before they're even getting on the scene. And it's safer for the officer, they're putting eyes on it, and it's, I mean, these things are going so fast in the air that the officer's seeing real life what they can expect when they get on the scene. So it's saving lives, it's giving officers real time, it's giving the 911 centers real-time footage before they even get there. And then once the call's over, the drone flies right back to the precinct, and it docks itself. And they've probably got some 18-year-old kid in California controlling everything.
It's amazing.
It is.
Last month, I was at Commerce City, Colorado, and they have a drones first responder program. And those, they have gunshot detection systems and the flock, safety systems. When there's a gunshot detection, these drones automatically take off, they automatically fly to the scene, and they've got eyes on the scene before the officers get there. They're there in a matter of a minute or two. It's amazing.
Parents, if you've got kids that are in high school, tell them to take drone classes and let the state pay for it. And they'll, they'll come, I mean, literally, they can walk across the stage with a technical degree and a high school diploma, and that Monday, they graduate on Friday, that Monday, they'll start a job at 75 grand a year at 18 years old. That's how demanding law enforcement technology is today. I mean, it's gotten crazy. So yeah, so we're all excited about that. We will definitely have it for our Christmas parade, so I know Ashley's going to be chomping at the bit to use it with her downtown development, so big things coming with the drone.
Watch that power line.
Absolutely. I'm not driving it, because I'll, I'll look at it.
We saw one crash one Christmas parade.
Yeah, but thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's going to be very helpful. That's going to be very helpful getting that in here this time. All right, at this time, let's move on to next item, which is community development comments.
How are y'all? Just doing some updates and trying to keep it a little short tonight. The 1882 at Old Canton, I believe we talked about this last month as well. It's 16 single-family homes. That final plat has been submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city. We've generated the building permits for it. We're waiting right now for the builder to come in and pay the fees, and he'll pick up the permits, and construction should start on that rather soon. The next one is the Ball Ground Brook subdivision. It's about 43 townhome units currently. They're working on horizontal construction and getting everything ready for horizontal. They did run into an issue with the Atlantic gas line easement that they have on the eastern portion of their property. We worked with them to try and figure out some issues, like how we could adjust the site plan a little bit just to make it to where they didn't have that retaining wall trouble. We did actually receive an update earlier today, though, that they are also asking to change some plans up. So we might have to actually talk with Cherokee County Fire Marshals to make sure that that is going to be approved from the fire marshal's standpoint. So we just got that today. We're going to work through with them to try and get that approved as quick as we can. Next is the upcoming Bertamini annexation. It's currently zoned AG in the county. It's proposed to be general commercial coming into the city. It's a little less than five acres. It's going to be a single-story commercial retail over off of Ball Ground Highway across from Subway. Right now, it's, we are going to be hosting a public hearing on November 6th at 5:00 PM, the hour before our work session, and we'll take the comments that we received from Cherokee County Planning Commission, as well as some of our comments, and host the public hearing at that time for the annexation. Next is the Gilmer Ferry neighborhood that's going in. This is across from Flat Bottom Road. It's zoned traditional neighborhood development. It's original site plans at 108 homes, but we spoke with the developer this week. He's thinking of taking the townhome portion out of there and possibly doing all single-family residential. We're waiting on them to submit new plans to come in with that. The property to the east of it is what we are calling the Evelyn Cox annexation. That has not been heard by us yet. They are also waiting on the planning commission to review the site plan for that potential home site. It's, I think, I believe between 33 and 36 homes. We're also waiting on the developer to send in the final latest plans that he has for that one currently. And then the last one is the McKinley Development. We met with these developers earlier this week as well. It's zoned R20 and 69.5 acres. If you're looking at the map here, everything on the west side is going to be parkland that is donated to the city during this development, and they're going to be putting in between 130 and 140 homes. We've requested them to readdress some of their things and kind of provided them with some preliminary comments, and we're waiting on them to submit their site plan as well.
What's the total number of houses and townhouses?
I didn't count it up. So some of these are changing. I would say, I think it was between 600 and 700 last time we were, for all the developments that are currently going in. This is just to highlight a few of the updates that have come in recently. Some of them are changing, though, and reducing the amount or adjusting the amount based off of what they're finding on the property when they go out there to do their preliminary studies for it.
Roughly 630.
She said roughly 630.
630, that's right.
That will drop off the other annexation coming in.
Correct.
Roughly about 630.
So 630 units this month. And last month, there were 600 and something units.
It's the same. Some of them are the same. They're just updates to the projects. No, no.
That's including the one annexation that's looking, one annexed and for another 33, but there's some that...
Correct. And they're changing them up and adjusting them. This 108-home development for Gilmer Ferry that you're seeing here, when they take those townhomes out, they're not going to be able to fit as many single-family residential in the area that they're putting in the townhomes. So that'll probably drop their number down a little bit there as well. This was just a few of our developments we have going on. I could probably stand up here for an hour and talk if I needed to about all the stuff we have going on, but didn't want to bore y'all to death, so.
One thing on the Gilmer Ferry piece, this is one that Palmer's happened to spend a lot of time with the developer, the county, and also the engineering team for the bypass because this line's right up where the bypass will tie back in to 372. And there's going to be a roundabout there at that end, so this is going to impact some of the housing here. So he's working with the developer to trade some units out of this phase and into the Evelyn Cox phase, just to protect that area. So the last thing we want to do with the roundabout is end up having it on top of homes. So we want to protect that vacant property so no homes are impacted in the future.
Thank you, Palmer, for updating us.
Building permits, just an update on that. There was just one issuance last month. So year-to-date, we're running about 24 behind last year. On our fund balances, Donna is very excited that October begins revenue season again. You know, we go through that dry spell, but bulk of the city's revenue comes in October through, October through March. The total funds on hand of 2.45 million. Utilities did make a decent recovery this month, back up to 988. If all goes well this month, then next month, we should see balance back over $1 million in reserve there. It's very critical in water because, as we'll discuss later, one issue can cost an awful lot of money in water and sewer. For our revenue and expenses, and I'm sorry, the heading should say September instead of August, but total revenues were $520,000 for the month against expenditures of almost $400,000 year-to-date, with revenue at 1.4 million against expenses of 1.1 million. Administration, the off-site work is now taking place for the audit. We're preparing now for open enrollment for insurance. That work has been completed, and the plans outlined that the employees will be able to choose from this year. Think we ended up with, it's going to be down about a 5% increase, looks like, in our premium for year-over-year, which for insurance is not horrible from what we've been seeing previous years. Also reviewing the software, Palmer has a few more to look at, but called Cloud Permit that will allow all our permitting, business licenses, plan reviews, and submittals all to be done online, cloud-based, even the plan submittals. One of the nice things about this is he will be able to assign users that don't necessarily, can't do anything in the system, but can see in the system. So if an elected official wanted to go in and see the set of plans for a specific subdivision, they would have access and be able to look at those plans. Very powerful software. Staff also just returned from training with GPTO, so for the occupation tax, alcohol licensing, and everything else, that was at Lake Lanier Islands this year, and came back with a lot of good information to put in place there. The appeal that was scheduled for the hearing tonight on the alcohol license for Buddies has been postponed. We're also working towards an open records request there for alcohol licensing going back to 2015. But again, this is based on our denial for that property being contiguous to a school Capital projects, just an interesting note to start with, we have a lot going on in the city, especially recently. We've just today issued the completion certificate on the Old Dawsonville Road sidewalk project, about $650,000. The roundabout in place, about $3.3 million with the change orders. Bypass engineering underway at $3.2 million. Intersection realignment project at Groover and Civic at $65,000. Valley Street paving should take place just for a segment of Valley Street in about two and a half weeks at $100,000. Total investments going on right now, most of this funded through state grants, is $7.3 million that's actively going on right now. For comparison, our total combined city budgets are less than $7.3 million. So we've had a good run recently with, especially with the Department of Transportation and Atlanta Regional Commission grants for highway projects. On the roundabout, the original contract there was $3.249 million. I could say we've added some change orders to there dealing with asphalt. Streetlights are ordered. Pavement should begin tomorrow or Monday. Did not hear back from the sub today, and that's the last we were given, was Friday or Monday to show up. GDOT approved the change here to do all leveling with asphalt. This means they don't have to come in and tear out all of the existing road and build up with aggregate. So if you look against that curb line right there, that's how thick the asphalt's going to be. It did have an additional cost to it that the state was good with, but the, it takes a lot of time off of the project and keeps traffic moving better for the rest of the project and gets the slip lanes open quicker. Again, just another example of how deep that will be. The city is applying for one additional change order. When they come in to do the top coat, the project right now stops in this vicinity. They will be paving from this line all the way back up to the roundabout. We are getting a separate price so that they can just extend the asphalt top coating up here to Valley Street, so that entire segment of road will be the same condition. On the bypass and spur, nothing has really changed on that this month. They still tell us early 2026 for our open house, first open house, for the public to be able to see the final layout and proposals on that roadway. Civic and Groover realignment and on into the major parking lot there is underway. They actually poured the concrete today. This is also going to create three new planter islands, which will soften the entrance to Calvin Farmer Park and make that area look better, but more importantly, function a lot Valley Street resurfacing, we touched on earlier, so that should happen, like I said, in two to three weeks. The Jordan Road rail crossing, the onsite, that contract has been approved with Cherokee County. The onsite meeting with Patriot Rail and the contractor will take place on October 16th. And at that meeting, they will come up with their construction schedule, and we will publish that so folks know what areas to avoid. On water, we're still waiting on our UCMR sampling, and hopefully that'll be back by mid-December. And like I said, once we have that back, we should be compliant in all ends through Our Mountain Brook connection on water, the water line there coming down Jordan Road is about 80% complete. They are in heavy rock. The other day, they only got in about 30 foot of pipe, so they're having a slow go with it, but they will get through it. The master meter has been ordered, invoiced, and paid. Connection by mid-October is what we believe, and given us the ability, hopefully still on track, to have the other connection there to Mountain Brook and have a pressure increase by mid-January. Water main break that Cruz worked on this week, or a couple weeks ago now. One of the things, we get criticized at times for being a little overzealous with our valving requirements on development. This water line break here did have about 30 customers out of water. It was just the customers in Malone's Pond. What Cruz found when they were in there was that a valve had been missed when the developer put everything in. To his credit, he had come back and installed that valve. So if this valve here where the scribble is had been in place, that could have kept basically everybody in water. So the more valves we have, the more we can keep folks in water. But that line that broke, it's not very often we get a main break, and you can't watch everything all the time, but that line lasted, I guess, about close to 30 years laying on top of this nice rock. And water lines don't like rock. They like sand and good dirt, so that was the culprit. One of the bad pieces of news, and did cover this with the auditors, and this happens from time to time, but part of the requirement we have is to maintain a bond coverage of 1.0 to make sure that we can always cover our debt payments. This is the first year that we did not do that. Our bond coverage dropped to 0.49, which, as we discussed many times at the beginning of the year, when our Howell Bridge lift station, when that pump broke, if any of you remember, and did all the damage inside the well, just spun around, tore everything up, you know, that wiped out our entire year worth of profits. Fortunately, that's why I say we try to keep a good, healthy reserve in our water sewer accounts. That repair was well over $300,000, $350,000. So we basically rebuilt the lift station. So we did discuss that with the auditors. They did not seem concerned. I said that's why they like to see the healthy fund balances, so you can address things like this when they happen. On parks in downtown, had the Ball Ground Rocks event. I think the thing that sets our events apart, and not to be, not meant as a criticism of any other location, but went through Jasper this past weekend with the Marble Festival, whatnot going on, but downtown is kind of dormant because everybody is at another location in the festival grounds. If you were downtown this weekend, it was just great for our brick and mortar businesses because our sidewalks were absolutely full of people. So you have the event. It's great for the community, but we all have sidewalks full of residents. Kudos to Ashley and Charlie up at Sunshine Life, bringing our fall decorations to life We've had an issue lately, I think may have noticed, we're spending way more than we wanted to on tree removals. We lost one in City Park the weekend before the festival. They're out there, just finished up, I think, yesterday in Calvin Farmer Park. The big pecan tree there snapped a few limbs up in the top. We actually had a family under that tree when the limb snapped. It didn't come all the way down, but it just broke. The arborist said it just was overloaded with pecans. Said the tree is healthy, but they went ahead and took it out. Coming soon to downtown is the mural that will be on the back of Scooped on Main. So that'll be a nice addition to our downtown and be done by Ashley, our resident artist. Downtown listening sessions, we have eight scheduled so far for Tuesday, and that's going to be an opportunity for just Ashley and I to meet with downtown businesses that have signed up in just, in a smaller group setting, hopefully hear their honest and direct feedback and on improvements they would like to see downtown and changes. Facebook views and interactions, I wanted to point this out tonight. You know, a lot of our businesses, not all of them, but most of our businesses are just discussing this year is a big improvement over previous years and what they're seeing in their sales, in their foot traffic and whatnot. If you back up to 2023, our social media accounts, we're getting, got 10,578 interactions for the year of 2023. 2024, got 87,000 for the year. But in the year now that we've had Ashley on and running downtown, we're getting over 500,000 interactions a month, which really works to bring people downtown and promote our businesses. So kudos to her. Kudos to our... and promote our businesses. So, kudos to her. Kudos to our businesses that continue to share and interact on social media, which helps bring in everybody. So, I think downtown is really in a good spot. And that is it.
Any questions for Eric?
Of course, we, we give him questions every day.
I just have one comment. Eric, thank you for working so hard on the railroad crossing on Old Jordan. You know, it's not in the city, but it affects every one of us that drives through there. And Cherokee County's been very, very gracious, helping us get that project sped up.
And for those that aren't aware, Mayor Council did appropriate $10,000 to help assist with that crossing, and Cherokee County politely declined that, thanked us greatly for the offer and, and for our willingness to participate, but said it was theirs and they would handle it, but they were very grateful for the offer to, to do that. So, we're not spending $10,000, and we're still getting the rail crossing.
When will that be done?
We'll publish that later. We have the, the onsite meeting, October 16th, with the rail and the contractor, and, and once they get the construction schedule, we'll publish it.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Thank you for everything you do. I tell, I tell people all the time, he does the job about, about three or four people.
I think every staff member, I think every staff member we have does. So, we have a wonderful staff, and they're greatly appreciated.
We do. But again, thank you. I want, one thing I wanted to mention here at the council tonight is, we have not set up our retreat. And it looks like, because, I mean, I'm hoping we can do it before the end of the year, because I'll be gone, and I would like to be in it last one. So, maybe we can look at doing it in the middle of the week, not the week, end of the week. And I'm going to ask Kaylin to actually reach out to all council members and try to come up with a, maybe like a Wednesday and Thursday, or Tuesday and Wednesday, that we could possibly meet this year. So, if you, will you do that, please? All right, thank you. Vic, do you have anything you want to bring up?
Hi. Well, our next council meeting, of course, is going to be in November, but I wanted to let everybody know. I know that Ashley is planning on a super veterans memorial ceremony on November the 11th. It's going to be out here, where we've always had it. The last, this will be our fourth year. Hopefully, it will be sunny weather. The last three years when I did it, it was rainy weather. But hopefully, it will be a nice sunny day for everyone to enjoy and come back and honor our veterans and our military.
Just thank you to everybody with the city doing such a good job, making, making us all safe and sound and keeping the water flowing. Very important.
Thank you for coming, and thankfully, it's fall, and I hope everybody's enjoying it. So, we're getting our cool weather finally.
Any, does our attorney need to say anything?
Don't need to.
Darrell? Okay. I'll add what I do multiple times here. We're looking at a big crowd of people, and whoever takes my place, hopefully will advocate enlarging this room, because we're going to need to do it. As I said before, when we opened this in 2009, for years, we didn't have, we had a reporter and maybe two or three people, that's all. But now we're, we're full, and I, I do think this needs to be enlarged. So, I'll, I'll say that again. Okay, at this time, we have two people that want to speak. David?
I'm good right now. I appreciate that. I'm not bad right now.
You don't want to speak now? Okay. Mr. Weaver, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be exceedingly very brief. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if it should meet with your approval, I have a small concern that I would like to address with the city of Ball Ground. However, prior to the meeting, your attorney of record was gracious enough to speak with me momentarily, and he actually was kind enough to extend his invitation for me to reach out to him at his firm and perhaps meet with either him or some of his colleagues to discuss some other legal matter that has arise, that after a review of an open records request that Ms. Bush had sent for me. So, an approbation of that and with tact this time around. I'll just wait till the matter's addressed through council and then report back to you.
And you live in Canton?
I do.
You live downtown?
Close. This one's better.
Okay. All right. Well, Darrell, thank you for getting involved. At this time, we've gone through everything on the agenda. We are not having executive session. So, could I ask for a motion to adjourn? I should have asked, sorry. Anybody else want to speak? I'm sorry. I, this is how, at my age, I lose my memory.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and neighbors. I come before you tonight on behalf of a fellow citizen of Ball Ground. The person, this person received an email that I believe our entire community deserves to hear, because it calls into question the standards of fairness, respect, and integrity that we should all expect from our leaders. This message was not an ordinary conversation between neighbors. It was sent by a current city council member who is also the spouse of someone running for mayor. Private citizen, it was sent to a private citizen who had not publicly declared support for any candidate. They were pressed to explain themselves, baited with questions, and made to feel that their silence or neutrality was suspicious. That is not respectful dialogue. That is intimidation. When it comes from someone who sits on this council, it should be deeply troubling to every single one of us. Now, I will read the email aloud, so you can hear it directly, word for word. "I remember being told that Woody paid you $1 million for your mother's house, but Dan says you got less than $600,000."
Public comments are not to be made about or directed to individual council members.
Their names will not be released. Their names are not going to be said.
They are to be directed to the council as a whole and about city business. So...
Okay, this is, this is city business, and I, I'm going to go ahead and finish my statement. I can't think of it...
That's for, that's for the council's consideration. If the council wishes to allow it, then that's...
I think you should allow it for a point of transparency.
Does the council agree?
Yes. I can continue.
So, let, let me just go through this. This is a business meeting. It's a business meeting of the city of, the city of Ball Ground's city council. And you're not supposed to direct any comments related to any issues involving employees or personnel. And I'm concerned that that is what this, these comments are about. You can't, this is a matter that would be discussed in executive session potentially. So, that's one of the prohibitions. You're, so I just, I say these things for the benefit of council.
What does the council want to do?
I have no problem with you reading it.
Okay, they're approving it. By the way, where do you live?
What now?
Where do you live?
In Ball Ground.
You're supposed to state your name, and please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Jessica Brigham. "I can't think of any other reason why you wish to support Dennis over Dan for mayor. Curiously yours, Annette Homiller. P.S. Dan does not know I sent this to you, and I'm sure you'd advise me not to ask you, but I really am curious. Neighbors, think about what you just heard. A private citizen of Ball Ground was singled out and pressured to justify themselves, not for campaigning, not for making a public statement, but for simply being a resident. This kind of behavior, if allowed to go unchecked, sends the message that the citizens are fair game for intimidation whenever power is at stake. Ball Ground is my home. My family has lived here for generations. We have built businesses here, raised children here, and carried the name of Ball Ground with pride. This town has always been about neighbors helping neighbors, not neighbors questioning each other's loyalty. We owe it to our children and our grandchildren to demand better. We must hold ourselves, and especially our elected officials, to a higher standard. Public service is not a weapon to be used against private citizens. It is a responsibility to serve all of us with honesty, fairness, and respect. I am proud of this community, and I believe we are better than intimidation, better than bullying, and better than backroom tactics. Tonight, I ask you to remember that Ball Ground's strength has always been in its people, its integrity, and its sense of unity." Excuse me. And to quote one of my favorite patriots, Charlie Kirk, "Protecting individual liberty from the tyrannical forces of government is an idea our nation was built upon. It is the only way to protect individuals' rights, the family, local churches and schools, or other groups who can't fight back themselves. Be skeptical of everything, especially your government. Ask question and fight for your rights and never surrender." Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
May I make a comment?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I support the city conducting a thorough investigation into this matter to ensure all city employees are protected from political pressure and that the public's trust in its officials is upheld.
Any other comments? Okay, but anybody else want to speak? Well, this time, we will go ahead and adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for attending.